I don't know what.
Hello.
We have a laws, rules and ordinance meeting tonight that starts at 6:30 so we have a meeting afterwards that we don't want it to take over our several clock start.
Okay.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you. And first and foremost, I apologize to my parents. My daughter's plane ran late and I ran to get here so I didn't even have time to go home and change. So basically I've been running since 7:00 a.m. During the meeting, I'll be sitting out here and not up there.
You can sit up there.
What you had before you is just a draft that I, something that I just worked up really quick. I had to work with the health department. Right now, we don't have any rules or regulations that prohibit smoking or use of e-cigarettes in our parks, which was just bizarre to me. I always, honestly, I always thought we did.
Yeah, I thought we did when I arrived here.
It's just signs up. There's no actual ordinance or rules on it. So what I did was I worked with the health department. They're in support of this and they're willing to supply some signage and stuff like that if we can bring forward this legislation that basically bans use of tobacco products and e-cigarettes on city property, in particular, city-owned recreational property, rec center, pool, the parks, stuff like that.
Any public place.
Yeah.
An amphitheater would be considered part of our schedule.
Yes. But I didn't want to do anything. This is just a draft because me and Mr. Melli were actually going over some of the penalties on it and think that it would be a minor misdemeanor. A maximum fine, I believe, is $150, $150 but we're working on a penalty on that though. But I didn't want to bring any type of legislation before council without having a laws, rules and ordinance meeting first to make sure that everybody's on the same page and all have the same opinion on it. Any questions on it or was like, if there is a going forward before I bring it to council, please just call me in my office and I can...
Well, I guess the reason I brought the amphitheaters is just because I feel like that would be one of the toughest enforcement points.
Sure.
Because I can't say I've definitely seen it but actually I have some people and they leave the green and they go sort of towards the bathroom. But even the parking lot is still parked, right?
It's also parked.
I just, you know, want to make sure we consider enforcement and how do we want to do that.
But if they sit at the strand inside that little area that's outside, they can, they can smoke, right?
Yeah. And I'm not, and I'm not gonna...
No, I know. I get it.
Enforcement is gonna be extremely hot. But if somebody's really creating a disturbance, it gives us a little bite that we can get people out if we need to.
I understand. I just figured this was the appropriate time to throw an alibi.
Sure.
Is this just for smoking cigarettes or is it smoking marijuana?
Oh, I think it's vaping and tobacco.
Marijuana is like...
Marijuana should be in...
Tobacco's legal as well.
Right, I understand.
We can ban it in other properties.
Can you do that as...
So when we talk about enforcement, just the advertisement, just the process of getting this to an ordinance and just the talking points that an officer would have, it would put us in a much better position to deal with somebody who is excessively participating with somebody complaining, you know?
Right.
People understand the rules and when we don't have a backstop, a final stopping point, it could be as easy as, hey, this actually is an ordinance, so we're gonna do this or this and it would put us in a much easier position after that.
If there's ever a complaint, yeah.
Well, I'm also surprised you haven't had this, I mean, the school system has banned that forever. I'm really surprised you haven't had this done.
I think that, in general, the public believes that it's banned so they don't, or at least they try to get out of the way of everybody else, which is great, is what we want. But, you know, looking through our ordinance, we don't have anything.
I literally thought that was... I've heard parents literally say, "There's a sign right there, you can't smoke here."
So Roger and Jamie Goltzer.
She was helping me out with all this stuff.
No good.
Would it be, are we considering adding marijuana to this as well then?
I would think so.
I would think so.
It just says tobacco products, but I could change it.
Yeah. T H C. So what I just gave you is just general outline of how this would play into your Think Fremont plan and smoke-free parks. The parks are a huge part of Think Fremont. I know we're putting a lot of money into Berchard Park. I was out of town at a training last week so I didn't get to meet the 5 o'clock meeting since I was in Columbus. But I know we've put a ton of resources and upgrades into our parks and so I think smoke-free, vape-free, but also the marijuana piece would also create a healthier environment for youth, looking at it as a young ones' play policy, right? Has a positive spin on it. But we're creating that space where it's healthy for all individuals. We've got the all-inclusive play park down there, our vulnerable populations are down there. So in here is just how this kind of aligns with the city's goals for Think Fremont and then information, right, we know all the secondhand smoke information for cigarettes, but there is information on secondhand cannabis smoke, secondhand aerosol from vapes, it's not just water vapor. And then there is, the very last page is from the National Recreation and Parks Association and kind of their stance on smoking policies or smoke-free. And then the back is highlighted with kind of their stance. But I do think it also, it gives us the ability to kind of enforce it, like Ken Frost and Chief Wunsinger said. Just, and we've talked about in kind of our meeting, just more of like a, just a reminder card, like, hey, just a reminder to start, like, we're smoke-free now. There is signage down there, you're right, but it's, I think, completely disregarded in some ways and there's no ordinance to back it up. And we do have some funding that we can also assist with providing signage to the parks and the amphitheater as well.
Well, the sign have the O R C code or the...
We have, we can design them to whatever you want them to look like.
I'm just curious because if somebody questions it, then the police officer can say, well, under the ordinance of la la la.
Yeah, whatever we, the city wants those to look like, we can absolutely work together to make those say...
I think it makes it look more valid.
Yes.
I've been lied to above Roger Young for 39 years right now.
Yeah, I've been going down there many, many, many years too.
Yeah.
And I was actually down at the park Monday and somebody walked right past me between the ball diamonds with a joint. And I, like, you can smell it. I've sat down at the new soccer field and in between the soccer fields, I've been able to smell somebody very obviously smoking marijuana. It wasn't a T H C vape, it was very clearly...
We had a marijuana in Walsh Park, smoked a cigar all the time on his break, so...
You know that here?
No.
Oh?
So, you know...
And when we're posting things, like, at the new amphitheater, you know, we're preventing that litter from being places or we've got cross-country meets down at Walsh Park, you know, it just creates a healthier environment for everyone.
So what if somebody's having a party in the park? Like, I think the only reason I'm thinking of this is the Walsh Park has the pride for party, which is a very nice party, but anybody that's at that party would be banned from smoking, correct? I just want to make sure. So there's no exception to the rule?
I believe that was the conversation. It's easier to not have the exception.
And it does say to this point about, I think we should include marijuana, but the one provision says no person shall smoke and it's not limited to tobacco right there, but I do think we should have marijuana, but also like...
Should be specified.
Yeah, right.
And I can get model T H C, like, which do if you just serve T H C in there, T H C products.
My only other question, maybe we'll parse this out, this is not necessarily Jamie, but it says it shall be enforced by the police, city staff or designated parks and rec personnel. So does that mean I can cite somebody?
No, it wouldn't mean you could cite somebody.
No, I know, I'm just...
It does, even like our parks and rec staff, they can't issue the citation, but they can...
Do the first verbal...
Do the first verbal warning and say, here's some, here's a pamphlet or whatever we're giving out at the time. Yeah, they certainly can do that.
And we can ban them from the parks if they don't, or kick them out?
Ah, if they don't want to comply, I mean, that would be a police matter, I guess.
So it does say within 50 feet of playground equipment, bleachers, concession stands and spectator areas, not on the flood wall?
Well, I think...
I mean, is that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I was, I was thinking about that too, but I would interpret, I think our intention there is even if you're outside city property and you're within 50 feet of the bleachers or, but, because if there's no smoking in the parks, why does it matter whether you're... So I think the 50...
I would think the easier position to take would be the entire, the park that's entirely...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I can, I can write it that way.
Yeah.
Section 2 paragraph looks like that.
Yeah, no, I see, I see the potential conflict.
At Walsh, I can be a hun, you know, half a mile away and still Walsh Park property, but you don't want me smoking in there.
Yeah, and it does say subsequent offenses could include exclusions, so we've got that.
The penalty section, I had a meeting with Mr. Melli yesterday. He can't be here today, but I had a meeting with him yesterday and we were kind of going over what we can and can't do as far as the penalties go, which will be brought forward when I give up a final draft version.
Right. Anything else? You want to do the second bit?
Yeah, so the next one is our, I'm sure you all know our parking ordinances and parking citations here in town, period hefty fine of $5. Now, if you do the math on the $5, the time it takes to get processed in court, the time it takes a police officer to write it and all the work that goes into it, yeah, that $5 costs the city probably about 20 to 30 at least, you know, so, so we're losing money every time we write a parking ticket. $5, so I did, I'm like, why, I'm thinking, why are, why are parking tickets in the city of Fremont only $5? I checked with all the local comparables, like what we use when we do the union negotiations and, yeah, thank you. Tiffin charges $25, Norwalk $30, Busiris $30 and Fremont $5.
Well, why issue the citations? Is it the police department?
Police department, yeah.
So if, if I'm parked in a two-hour spot, do they come by and swipe your tire and then, I know they don't do that, so where do they issue parking tickets at?
Uh, parked across sidewalks, parked, you know, like any, any part, parked opposite traffic.
With one exception, which is handicap violations.
Well, sure.
That is a $250 under an O R C parking. We do have similar language, probably by the time this is a final draft would have it match the $250.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to raise that to $30 comparable with all the other area cities of our size so that we can not lose money every time we write a parking citation.
Do we have any kind of violation of these citations?
No, not really, because it kind of varies year to year. It went down considerably when we redid Rossin Avenue, you know, people used to park there for the tear.
That's something I could get is the volume of citations, but honestly, when we can get people to move their cars, we don't issue citations.
That's the goal.
Now, we just finished a program and I spoke at it at several city council meetings where we literally moved two parking lots, haul of disabled vehicles, expired plates, flat tires from our roadways in the city. And now that, like, operation has ended, but we're still looking for those vehicles. Now, this would just be something in place to help us prevent the accumulation of those types of vehicles on our city streets. And I would point out that it's $30 and then the way that this is currently written, it doubles if they don't pay within a certain amount of time.
It does.
So it's 30 to 60 instead of 5 to 10. So it mirrors the old language, just the cost is that much higher. Now, that is a very strong deterrent to repeat parking. I would love to see after your third citation inside of 12 months for it to be a toe situation. I just don't know how to have that. There's not other comparable ordinance.
Well, we do. The court does.
And we certainly, if the council, if there's interest in that, I could, I could look at the different options. I worry that requiring or training an officer to apply a boot would put us right back into the $5, $10 scenario of now we have, now we're gonna buy a boot.
Right. The boots and everything.
Right. And the big problem is our fines aren't enough. Yeah, it's not a... Parking violations, are they a huge problem?
They're not a huge problem, no.
But what we find...
But I'll give you, I'll give you one typical example and I'm not naming any names nor am I gonna say a location sound like, but there is one individual here in town that illegally parks on a continual basis.
The creatures.
And, and comes out here and pays his $5 because, hey, it's cheaper for me just paying $5 than it is to find a parking spot and they do this continuously, all the time.
We can't just assess court costs on that?
Uh-uh. They just come in and pay, pay the $5, or the $10.
It's silly to me because you guys need to hear court costs are more than...
Well, I think there's some finer points with how much the municipal court will, is willing to put into a $5 to $10 action.
Right. I understand.
So will they ever bring back the, you know, we have all the signs all over the city that say two-hour parking and 15-minute parking and all that stuff.
As of right now, no, that, that chalking of the tires was ruled unconstitutional or orphaned and I believe exerted some...
Why do we have the parking signs up there?
Well, that, you can still do that.
Well, there's still, there's still the types of violations.
You have to, you can, your accuser, the state, the police have to see you were there at 12 o'clock and see you're still there at 4:01.
Well, the reason I ask is because in front of our office, St. Joe High School parks there all day long and there's no way for anybody to park, to come into our office, you know, and it's been, and it's all down Clover Street and all down Proving Street and they, they don't care.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many $30 to $60 parking tickets it would take.
Well, certainly five. Many years ago, I got one. I had no clue, I didn't even look at the sign. I got out, I went into Roger's office, he wanted me to help him out that day for something. I come out and I have a ticket and I thought, well, ain't gonna do that here.
So it wouldn't take much, would it?
So she's the whole's money.
But no, I paid that right now.
She's never bored for her rest.
So we document vehicle locations in two different ways. We do sometimes mark on pavement, not on the vehicle. We mark locations with pictures, sometimes the cars have flat tires, so it's really easy to tell.
Well, sure.
Now, it's harder and harder because we've moved a significant amount of those cars. I'm not saying that there's not a car hiding somewhere in the city with flat tires that we haven't found yet, so if anybody sees this, just let us know where that is.
Well, and one of my questions is, is we had a gentleman come talk about cars that have been left on the side of the street, you know, and I think there's a car right over there that's the same size as the date, but he works nights.
Right. So sometimes it takes some investigation to determine that, A, it's a public parking area, you know, there's some places in the city that might look like it's a public parking area, but very definitely somebody's private property, but they paved up to their factory, that's correct, the property that is in it, and those cars are legally parked on somebody's private property.
I remember one time we talked about, we literally just going down, who went, two hours, we didn't move, we didn't move to a spot, we moved to a parking spot.
Not a violation of two-hour park?
Certainly, it's a... Is there any more discussion?
Anything else that you could think of, you know, as the weeks go on, feel free just give me a call at any time and I'll try to answer any questions that I have about this stuff.
Right, I'll return the LRO meeting and we'll move on to our zoning meeting.
Yeah. We'll call the zoning meeting to work.
What's your name?
Here.
So we're here for a zoning appeal meeting for 1708 Hayes Avenue, Shawn and Hannah Spade. Property owners back in June, they applied for a variance for a shed. The shed was 240 square feet. They were requesting a shed four feet from the property line and so they denied the variance. So they're here to appeal, hoping that Mrs. Spade explains the variance.
Good evening. Hello. We are Shawn and Hannah Spade, reside at 1708 Hayes Avenue.
So appreciate your time. So what we're trying to do, we built a shed, 12 by 20 square foot. We realized it's about this four foot, so we're gonna move it up to either 10 foot setback. So we're gonna do that, but by doing that, it made it closer to our city play area where we couldn't do any, like, drainage. So we wanted to go back to 4.75 foot from our probably 10, which would be five and a half foot from just since we transitioned to 10.
This depends on the property line?
Nine inches from the property.
Nine inches from the property. We realized we do have a big yard, but what kind of, I think some people miss is we have a right-of-way for A E P, which is grass and maintained, so it makes our yard seem bigger than what it is, but honestly, we have to be that 15 foot from up that park line beyond that. So it puts our shed on an inaudible spot.
I do have pictures too, because you guys would like to see her. It's just from different angles. So it just offsets it unless it makes it look like it's sitting in the center of the yard, like, not in the center of the yard, but awkwardly enough in the yard. There's over 10 foot behind the shed of unused property, like you said. We'd like to landscape around it, but we only have five and a half foot between the shed and the play yard to follow setbacks, so we wouldn't be able to landscape around it, but if we were able to put it back and follow the smaller structure setbacks, we would be able to. And like, it doesn't have to be like I said, it's 4.75 foot.
What's this picture on, four foot or 10 foot away?
It's 10 foot. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's 10 foot.
So you have to move the shed?
We would move, yeah. We, so what had happened is we had the shed ordered, it was ready to go, we didn't even think about permit. So when we found that, when someone said, hey, did you get your building permit? We're like, oh, no, we didn't. So we called, we made a phone call to Tony on, at his work and said, hey, we're heading down to the zoning department. We have a shed that's over 200 square foot, it needs to, it'll have to be 10 foot square back, or 10 foot instead of four foot, but before we file, we wanted this blessing because we were, we were gonna have to file for a variance. Why spend the money for a variance if we're gonna have an issue? So he said as long as he can maintain his fence, he didn't care what we did, we filed the variance, we got to the first variance board, Erica was at the meeting, she was a secretary. The, her secretary in her office told me, when I spoke to her, that Erica had said that we would have a hard time getting approval because we have a large enough lot. I said, well, let's still take it to the board to see what they say because we're not asking for it to be on the property line. We want to follow the setbacks that are for 200 square foot shed, which is only a little bit smaller. So when we went in, the first two went, our turn was up, she stressed, we did not know where our property pin was exactly. When we bought the house, we were told that it was very close to the fence, less than a foot. She said that Mrs. Strudinsky had sent a letter stating that it was two foot from the fence, which I understand that raised concern. So she said her answer to the board was they can go find the pin and follow the setbacks because they have plenty of enough yard to follow the setbacks. And so that was like kind of the final answer in the variance board. Though I, I explained to her, the problem is, or we explained to her, we have an A E P right-of-way that's grassed and maintained by us, so we have that, then we have to go 15 foot into the yard and then 10. So it just looks like it's just, if we went anywhere else in the yard, it would just look like it's sitting in the center. It just looks not right.
How long you been there?
May of 2020.
So a few years. And when you bought the property, did you know about the A E P?
Yes. There used to be a pine tree where the shed is now.
How far do you have to be from your property line out?
10 feet.
What's the reason behind that?
Because that's the, that's the ordinance. So anything under...
I'm saying like, what we step along.
That's what we do. That's the zoning ordinance.
Because it's bigger than 200 square feet. If the, if this shed was 200 square feet or less, it could be four foot from the property line, but because it's 240 square feet, it's gotta be 10 foot from the property.
Yeah, due to the size. And then I sent you an email with all of the ordinances and, you know, that pertain to this situation and I also sent you aerial of their lot size. So if you look at their lot size, I believe it's, it's 125 by 138.
Now, where this cement is behind or the gravel is behind it?
Not that far back. Maybe about halfway between where the shed is now and the fact that...
Have we...
Yeah, we shed far as four foot, so we want to go back about 4.75 from the pin. So we're 10 foot from the pin now, we want to go 4.75 from that pin.
Five and a half foot from the shed.
Or from the fence.
I don't know what I think we should follow their ordinance. Well, just keep in mind, you know, variances are for people with undue hardships. So like, when you have a smaller lot or something like that, that's why variances are granted, not just because you request it. So I, you know, the code doesn't really allow for them to...
Are the names opposed to this?
Well, yes, because then they would be grieved because that shed is closer to their lot line than it has to be because they can meet the setback requirements. So I believe that's why the board made, the Board of Appeals made the decision to deny the request because their lot is like, is very large.
But you said your neighbor was Tony Strudinsky, you said he had no problem.
He's been here. And then he, his wife sent a letter before the variance.
About a week later, Mrs. Spade came in and received a permit for the shed because she had already ordered it and it had to be delivered. So the shed is in compliance right now, it's 10 feet from the line, but she wants the request to move it out of compliance now. So she has a shed permit, a valid, you know, permit.
So the length of the shed is not changing, it's definitely the shed.
Well, that's not a big thing. If the wood had went 10 by 20, then it would follow, but it wouldn't have been. The wall, the length of the wall, the 20-foot wall would not change. In order for it to be that, that 200 square foot, it would be the depth of it, so it wouldn't have changed, like, we could have been four foot from...
Forty square.
Like, if it would want to be the depth of it, it wouldn't have been the length of it, it would have been the same.
But it's still just 200 square feet.
Well, we'd like to land, one, so we don't have the waste of yard behind it, but we'd like to landscape around it and where our play yard is, there's only five and a half foot between that, so there, we wouldn't be able to landscape and make it look nice. I mean, like, we live on Hayes Avenue, we want our yard to look nice.
If you look at, if you look at the backyard, the shed up here, our house, our house sits back like this.
Yeah, we'd have like the landscape and just the flow of the yard.
Okay, we're kind of running out of time and I know Tony Strudinsky is here and wants to speak, so thank you.
My next Jamie.
Have you luck, Tony.
Have you luck, Tony.
Not because you've got a play area, if that's the case here, look at those pictures, go to the east side of their property line, you're going to see. Side, like, they want to do it, but at this point in time, their patio in the back, my patio in the back, my fence, these are all too close, the garages, this 240 square foot 12 by 20 barn compares to my 14 by 22 garage that is attached to my house, I could put a car in this barn. So all I'm asking you to do is deny the variance. If there was something here extraordinary, which I did not hear in this room here tonight, as a reason, you could consider it, but if you don't want to move a play area, if you say you don't like it in the backwards, dead space, I'm sorry, that's what setbacks are. Dead space, keep people from living on top of other people. I'm ignorant here, I'll admit it.
But I noticed the house itself is, I mean, they're not even going to move it back as far as the house plan, what, how, why would the house been okay to be that close?
Because that was done well before zoning ever came to Fremont. These houses were built in 49 and 51, didn't have zoning back then.
So it would have been denied nowadays, right?
Clearly, clearly. And that's still a fire risk, if either one of those houses had a fire, because that can jump.
Houses on the other side are even closer. Right. Houses on the other side are even closer.
No.
No?
Not on the other side, on the east side, it's, he's got probably 20.
You know, the west side of you.
Not really, there's driveways, there's driveways in there, and that's, you know, right, that keeps you jumping, and driveways are okay.
You, you had said that the look from Hayes looking at McPherson, this would obstruct the view?
Yes.
And that's from your backyard, which.
No, and that would be from my front yard, even from my front driveway, if I'm looking down the side of these two houses.
Does anyone see the pictures from there?
No, 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 I grew up in the area, I was just kind of curious about the stigma, I was like, thank you.
The spades did say that there was a tree there, they had about a 60-foot pine tree, a live tree that they took down, and pulled the roots out and the stump, and this is where part of that tree was.
It was actually dying before they ordered that?
Doesn't matter, you know, they don't catch fire, sometimes barns do.
It's a nice design of a building, like, if I'm down in our, I'm going to say, that's a nice looking building.
But I understand. Yep. Any other?
Anybody else have any questions?
Just.
I'd just like to add that you don't have to vote on this tonight, I was given this to relate by Jim Mally, that you have up to 45 days, and I suggest that you go out, if you haven't went out to look at it, go out to their, their property to look at it before you vote.
Okay. One more question. As far as when you got your permit, the building was complete?
No, the, the building was on a trailer in Amish country when we got the permit. We had had the stone put down and excavated before we got the permit, it's that, the first section was done, that Monday, we went and got the building permit for the shed, or sorry, to, because it was Memorial Day weekend, or we attempted to, we were told it was because it was over 200 square foot, we had to file variance, we had to wait to that next variance board, so that's what we had did, so no, there was no.
To get a permit and draw this?
Yeah, we paid $85 to go to the variance board, to be across the variance. That same day, they approved a 26 by 40 in a rear yard, because they have a small yard, but we're discriminated against because we have a large yard, and we can't put it.
Okay, well, I think everybody needs to maul this through in their brain, and maybe go out and look at the property, and, you know, we have two council people missing this evening, so I think that until everybody's had a chance to understand what's happening.
But just to bear, to clarify, that her, she did get a permit for where it's at right now, so it is where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, like, it's legal.
Yeah, it's legal where, you know, she paid for, uh, permit, building permit for the shed, but now she just wants to move it back toward the.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because there was a statement that said the building was already existed before she got the permit.
Oh, she just meant that she ordered it and it was.
Right, right, yeah, I just, clarification.
I have another question, by, and we've granted variances before, right? And things like that.
And it counts as general variances?
Well, I'm just saying like this here, but what I'm getting at, are we setting precedent for the future?
Always. Well, the reason that we have the zoning rules is so that we don't have these issues.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why does Fremont, I've researched, Gibson, Virgo, Harbor, Clyde, they all have one standard setback for whatever size building it is, why does Fremont have two?
Where are they located?
I did, I did, Tiffin, Tiffin, Gibson, Virgo, Harbor, and Clyde, I tried to do like the touching neighbors and the surrounded ones, and they all had like, one standard setback, like five. And Fremont has two for a different size, I had like that size, so I was just wondering why, why it's not.
Other than fire, why would there, that urgency be paid, or for other reasons for variance of that size?
They all voted for it anyway, so.
Well, there you go.
Well, fire code has its own setback too, it has to be, the five and the 10, the four foot and the 10 back is different for fire, there is a building-to-building setback for fire, and we are not within, like, we're not close enough to a building to be within that, we're, we need to.
I have, 20, 20.
20, 20-ish.
20, 20, yeah.
Okay, well, we're going to adjourn this meeting and move on to, does anybody need to take a break before we move on to the council meeting? Yeah, go ahead, we'll take a two-minute, three-minute break.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Fraser.
Here.
Wies. Adi.
Here.
Elder.
Here.
Leibel.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sleek.
Okay, welcome everybody to the city council, somebody, yes, we should go say that. Go ahead.
I make a motion to excuse Christina Wies and Jim Sleek from the meeting tonight.
Okay, roll call.
Wies.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek. Fraser.
Yes.
Okay, so there's. Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from last meeting, are there any changes to the minutes? Council also has a copy of the agenda for tonight, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, then we'll get started with the readings.
Third reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1127 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Use Classification Tables. President, adopt.
Second.
Chris Leibel moves to adopt, Seth Fraser, second. Any questions about the suspension of the. No, we're not having a suspension, a suspension, never mind, any questions about the ordinance? Roll call.
Adi.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Third reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1129 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Use Specific Regulations.
Second.
Chris Leibel moves to adopt, and Danny Addy, second. Any further questions on this ordinance? Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Adi.
Yes.
Approved.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the safety service director to amend the decision classification plan and the employee compensation plan for BUAFSCME employees to include building maintenance specialists.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Chris Leibel moves to adopt, Danny Reese, second. Any questions on the ordinance? Roll call.
Leibel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Adi.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Okay, number four, third reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare, sign, and enter to contract for submission to the Ohio Public Works Commission with the State Capitol Improvement Program, SKIP, and the Local Transportation Improvement Program, LTIP, annually for project funding and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, Chris Leibel moves to adopt, Seth Fraser, second. Any questions? Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Adi.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibel.
Yes.
Approved.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing enterprise zone agreement to be approved and entered into between the city of Fremont and KFV JHI LLC and declaring an emergency.
Remember, President?
Yes.
If you remember at the last meeting, which was our first reading and an introduction of the agreement, I had indicated that that was a draft agreement that you saw at the last meeting, because there were pieces of information we didn't have to include in, in the agreement, we, which was mostly because we were doing a lot split, and we didn't have an address or parcel number, and so we kind of had to wait on the lot split to include, include those in the agreement, I think the LLC was in the process of being registered with the Secretary of State, and then there were some proof readings, and I think in that meantime, we'd also had some conversations with the schools, and so in the, I think, three weeks now since we met, all those things have been addressed, we've had meetings with the schools, schools supportive of this, we've corrected this, and we are unless, now, we're going to proofread it one last time, but I think we've proofread it a couple of times that were pretty certain, this is the final version, maybe somebody sees something, or maybe one of you sees something that you have a question or, or, you know, think about, but I guess that's the nature of me kind of addressing, is the ordinance says Exhibit A, Exhibit A is the agreement, the agreement last time was just a draft, and we're off, this is the final version, so, and we are not asking you to suspend Rule 4, I know you can't anyway, but we're still on course to, you know, third reading, take action on August 21st.
Okay, thank you, that constitutes the second reading of that resolution. Okay, next.
First reading of an ordinance to authorize the expenditure and direct the safety service director to enter into a contract with D2 Escavating LLC in an amount not to exceed $329,000 for the Wilson Street Tank, excuse me, Wilson Street Elevated Tank Improvement Project.
So is this the water tower?
It is the water tower, there's some work that needs to be done, there's like a shed looking structure.
Oh, I know.
That needs, yeah, this needs to be redone, and of course, we got to put some equipment in there and some pumps, so it's, I mean, obviously, we can't suspend Rule 4, so I won't be asking for that.
They're not going to paint the water tower?
Not painting the water tower, no, this is all, this is all like, like, uh, structural, not structural, but mechanical.
Mechanical.
Mm-hmm.
When do you want this work to be done?
Soon as possible, as soon as possible.
So we can wait till the next meeting to suspend Rule 4?
Yeah, yeah, D2 is actually the ones doing the Prospect Street.
Oh, okay.
Right now, so they're still, I mean, they're still working on that, but next meeting, I'll probably ask to suspend Rule 4, yeah.
Educate me here, Ken. What, I heard somebody speak. That tank, it must be very vital, because I'm just thinking, how does it work as far as, I used to have a tank behind my house.
Sure.
And I think there was one on the east side tore down.
I don't know, I know the one behind your house, but I don't know about the east side.
What was the reason, how, why don't, doesn't that tank need it anymore with this one?
Why isn't the one behind your house?
Yeah, why wasn't that?
I, I mean, it was tore down several years before I think I even worked here, and from what I remember, this is a long time ago, I'm talking, what, almost what, 25, 30 years?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe that, that, the one that was behind your house was in such poor condition that it was cheaper to build new than it was to rehab the one behind your house, and with the way the lines ran for service connections, that just happened to be the place that they put it, if I remember rightly, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I'm right on that, though.
And at that time, too, I think they said something about, well, the main tank we have out by Fairground.
Yes.
Was enough pressure for that they didn't need that, and that's, I was just wondering why.
I can tell you that the, the city has grown considerably with our, the amount of water that we use, Amp Energy draws a lot of water, and some of the, the other industry draw a lot of water, now, we have enough, our plant is big enough to produce what we need, but getting them these water towers so that there's enough pressure distributed amongst the city is key, and the one that was behind your house, I'm 99% sure it was just in too bad a shape, and that's why it took it down. Danny, they were, they were some of the original tanks in the city, and they were smaller. So as time went on, and you built new tanks, they built newer, bigger tanks? Yeah. And replaced those?
And so I was just wondering, you know, did that cause pressure, it does well, but evidently it wasn't needed for, for pressure.
Right.
And I'm just curious. Sorry.
Okay, that constitutes the first reading of that ordinance.
First reading of a resolution accepting the amounts and rigs as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor by the city council.
That's something that Mr. Groll does every year, we do this annually, that's, he certifies the tax rates through the county so that we can get our, our tax funds. That's, he certifies the tax rates through the county so that we can get our tax funds.
Okay. That constitutes the first reading of that resolution. And that's the end of the readings. Do any of you guys have any reports? Seth, do you have any reporting in your committee?
Yes, absolutely. So, I wanna remind everybody the Mike Puro Special Olympic Softball Tournament this Saturday morning at 9:30. Registrations began for football, volleyball, and soccer. This is the last month of summer activities. At the parks, the last day of the pool at the rec center will be 8:17, and then the annual facility maintenance shutdown will be the 18th to the 24th.
The facility as far as the rec center?
Yep.
Okay. That it?
Yes, ma'am.
Chris Leibel.
Not a clear report, but I would like to thank everybody that came out to Burridge Park a couple weeks ago. That was nice, nice attendance, some good news coverage. Hopefully, we can have some more positive conversations about improvements at the park and go forward to that meeting. Thank you, madam president.
Denny Adi. Streets and utilities.
I'm going to do this in the form of a question. Chief, have we had any meetings of late? Do we need to call a meeting?
For?
Traffic safety, like...
Oh, apologies. Yeah, I don't think there's anything pressing for a... That it? Okay. Jim Sleek's not here. How about John Alder?
I have nothing, Madam President. We had our LRO meeting to discuss ordinances, or probably be on the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Angie Reese, Citizen Service Committee.
Police Department's doing a great job as usual, and they're still looking for more police officers, and so is fire department. And I'd like to add a comment. I went to a Kiwanis meeting this afternoon. We had a breakout and everything, and we had a new member being inducted. A new member is Big Nut.
Oh.
Nice. John Peters, thank you. John Peters was inducted. He said he'd worked at Whirlpool for...
Forty-three.
Forty-three years. And he's got 16 school districts that they award a scholarship to, and the scholarship is only to Ohio State.
I wonder why.
I think that's a wonderful thing, you know, that he, a single person, can do all this. And he fits right in with Kiwanis, because Kiwanis is always for the kids, kids and family, and so he's always for the kids. So, I'm very proud that he's a member of Kiwanis. Thank you.
I think John would want you to mention Lady Nut.
Lady Nut.
First lady.
Somebody's gotta put up with him, right?
He's gotta get him dressed and put his makeup on.
Angie, did he say, is he still working or not?
Uh, I think he's retired because he's worked there 43 years.
You mean retired from Whirlpool or retired from Big Nut? Whirlpool.
Because I think he was still working for 43 years.
I don't think he's working.
Okay. Ken Frost, you have anything?
Yeah, really quick. We've got a lot of projects going on around the city, and a lot in the queue. We're extremely busy. Our engineering department is extremely busy. Everybody is. Erica's working hard doing her own stuff, but one, a couple of points of interest. Part of our paving project this year was St. Joe Street. I'm just giving you a forewarning, we're gonna have to push that off until October, probably end of October. Because, I'll tell you why. Because Columbia Gas decided that they needed to do a project down there. And, well, because we send them a list of our projects so that we don't put a brand-new street down or they come in and chop it up.
Good delay.
But, in this case, I don't know whether they didn't get the memo or whatever, but anyways, we had to work through some issues, so that portion is gonna be delayed a little bit. Obviously, Prospect Street's going on right now, and we have several, several streets projects and infrastructure projects coming up in the city. It's just incredible. A lot of our infrastructure projects have to, have to do with some of the new businesses in town credited to economic development, so essentially Bob's making my job harder. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing. Relay for Life is Friday. Don't forget. It's at the amphitheater.
I have a question.
Okay.
When Columbia Gas goes in there and tears up the street, are they responsible for repaving?
Yes.
Does that come into the bid or affect...
It's part of our ordinances. And they usually are pretty good. I will say they're pretty good about making repairs, however, I was not willing to allow them to penetrate and brand-new pavement, which is why we're pushing it off until the end of October.
Do we have somebody go back through and check when they do those?
We try our best. Sometimes they just do it.
Yeah.
But Randall usually is on top of them, yeah.
That it?
Yep.
Okay. Bob Gross?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Councilman Leibel said. Great turnout last Tuesday for the Burridge Park meeting. I think we, Angie, I think you told me you counted, there were like 65 people there, and so it was a great turnout, and I think it was incredibly helpful, because I think there were some misinformation, different thoughts of what was happening, and I believe having those renderings and having the architect, and I know every council member there engaged people in conversation, I know the mayor and I were engaged in conversation. The meeting started at 6:00, I got there at 5:15:00. I don't think I left there until 8:00 o'clock, because they, anybody that wanted to talk or have conversations. And truthfully, it truly is just concepts, just ideas. This is one of those projects that, you know, we solicit the public input, and we've done that. We've had two public meetings. We put a committee together of people that live in the neighborhood, and we've taken all that information and we're just turning it over to the architect. You've heard what we've heard. Just, you know, take some time, you know, 30 days, 60 days, and then put together, you know, put together a plan for us, you know, and come back in a month or two, or probably more like two months, and then share that with us, and then, you know, we'll move forward. So, despite what...
Do you have a timetable for this? I mean, I sense it's wide open. You have to say...
Yeah, no, that's a great question. We have a loose timetable. Our goal is to have the plan done by the end of the year, spend '26 applying for more grants with the thought of being out there in the spring of '27. And so, Mayor Sanchez is committed to using as many local dollars from our budget to streets, and this is one of those projects where, you know, we feel like if, you know, we've been successful doing this in the past, you know, we kinda, I think we found a successful path here to start with the amphitheater, partnering with Rotary and the Downtown Group, and getting an architect, and putting a plan together, and that went over very well, and, you know, Jared Brown, Bill Ronneke, Gary Clicker, all have been incredible, impressed with our presentation. Similar to Kiwanis and the Health Department, putting that plan together, and so we're just kinda duplicating that. You know, we're working with the Burridge Historic Neighborhood Association, the Historic Society, bringing in some neighbors, working with an architect again, and truthfully, despite what folks may hear, there's nothing radical going on. There's, you know, I think we, I think, you know, there may have been some information, it's like, no, we just want a nice shelter house. We just want some nice restrooms.
And I also think, and I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, is that, you know, the assumption there's money already set aside, and that's not even true at all.
I, yeah, and I think...
You know what I'm saying?
Probably a grant. Yeah, so there's $600,000, so we, we were a little out of order, meaning we had just started this, and this grant opportunity came. So, we quickly had the architect put a shelter house together and some playground equipment, and we put it in for a grant, and we're successful. And, and so, but now we have freedom to kinda, as long as it's a shelter house playground, we have, you know, we can fit it into our plan, and I think there's, we're not in any rush, we're not forced to use that money in the next 12 months. So, like I said, I think our plan is to try to get out there in '27, and we could spend '26 to maybe get more grants, so when we're out there, we could do more, and I think the plan could be laid out in phases, like, we have money for this now, but as more grant opportunities or donations, or if somebody wants to sponsor a shelter house, for example, you know, we could add those later. But I think that's really where we're gonna have plan done by the end of '25, refine the plan, or more specifically, apply for more grants in '26, and then, depending on the funds that we have through grant dollars, we'll go out there and make some improvements in '27.
I think one of the big rumors was we're gonna take down some of the trees, and they never hurt the park, but take some dead ones down and plant new, so everyone can...
Yeah, so, we've been in contact with Stephanie Miller, who is an arborist from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And once we kinda were a little bit further along with the plan, we're gonna bring in an arborist, and they're gonna put a tree plan together, like, so based on the environment of soil, sunshine, shade, tell us what trees are successful here and would thrive in this environment. So, and for every tree we've taken down, our goal was to plant two. So, I...
Can I, I think that was the thing, really, to, to me, there are two main points in the middle of discussion, and, yeah, sort of, about money, there are two main points about the trees and the landscape, and also whatever renderings, you know, that had parking in the middle of the park. I mean, other than that, I think a lot of people are excited about the possibilities, what we're discussing, and want to see improvements, and I think that's...
And I would say this about the parking, I think that was a misnomer a little bit, too. The parking was done with the thought of handicap people in mind, you know, I mean, and so I think that grew legs of its own. It was really meant to be, there really is some thoughtfulness put behind this plan, and the thought was like, hey, right now, you have to walk through uneven ground to the shelter house, and you gotta walk even further to the restroom. So, if we put a path that somebody could be dropped off, and maybe there's a few handicap spots, you know, maybe it's, the park is a little more accessible to handicap folks. So, that's where the whole idea that, you know, and somehow, I think the notion was we're putting in this giant parking lot, and, you know, well, thinking about the, listen, thinking about the meeting afterwards, I thought, I should've had the architect draw a parking garage and plant that seed, and I thought that probably... And I thought, well, that probably would not go over well, so we won't do that. I mean, they were, you know, so, but no, and so, here for the camera, there's no parking garage, we're just kidding. So, but that was, so that's some of the rhyme and reason, so, but that's a great question about timeline. And, you know, and then, if you've been on Fifth Street, the Old Kroger's building is down on the ground, they're clearing it away, there's some site prep. And then, lastly, just before this meeting, United Way had their Men Against Cancer fundraiser out at the Neely Center. And I did not realize this, but last year, they raised $55,000 for cancer patients, and they had a guy give up and give a testimony with cancer, had surgery, and then it had come back, and he's in the middle of battling it now, and just talked about how much he appreciated the funds for gas money to even get back and forth through the camp. I think he, you know, can't get to work right now. So, you know, then it just got me thinking, as I'm driving here from the Neely Center, you know, we have a lot of great organizations like Rotary, Kiwanis, and, you know, United Way, Danny wants me to mention Exchange, Lions Club, but, you know, imagine where we would be as a community if we didn't have those. So, grateful to all those organizations, you won't be the first meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment. We had our annual potluck, the Kima Tree and Youth Information from Tuesday night, and we had a really lovely potluck. We need to go just places this year, among the ones you like, the lakeside, walking around with the children, the humans, the kids, the adults, and everything, but we had our little meeting there.
there.